I will now call to order the December 8, 2022, Clackamas County Board of Commissioners Business Meeting. County Administrator Gary Schmidt, would you please call the roll?
Yes Chair Smith, first our staff support this evening. Clerk to the Board Tony Marneck, County Council Stephen Madcor. Roll call Commissioner Savis.
Present.
Commissioner Schrader.
Here.
Commissioner Fisher.
Here.
Commissioner Scholl.
Here.
Chair Smith.
Here. I will now lead us in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good evening, everyone. We are holding this meeting in person and virtually. If you've joined us via Zoom for this meeting and are interested in providing public comment, we will prompt you when to do that when the time is right. General public comment will be taken at the usual allotted time. I would like to remind all participants, including staff, all elected officials, and members of the public, that Robert's rules of order will be followed during this meeting. We welcome your opinions and look forward to your polite comments. Gary, can you introduce the first item?
Yes Chair Smith, this is a board discussion item under the Department of Health Housing and Human Services. Item one, approval of a purchase and sale agreement with YCKC Hospitality LLC for the purchase of real property and improvements, generally known as the Quality Inn located at 9717 Southeast Sunnyside Road, Clackamas, Oregon 97015. Total value is $15 million. Funding is through a combination of local and state sources, including the state of Oregon's Project Turnkey 2.0 program. No county general funds are involved. Staff presenters are Adam Brown, Deputy Director of Health Housing and Human Services, Vaheed Brown, Human Services Manager, and Tonya Koloeski from Deputy Director of Public and Government Affairs. Adam and Vaheed will start. Welcome and please go ahead.
Please introduce yourselves gentlemen.
Good evening Chair and Commissioners. Adam Brown here, Deputy Director, Health Housing and Human Services.
Good evening Chair Smith Commissioners, my name is Vaheed Brown, Housing Services Manager for Health Housing and Human Services.
Go ahead.
Thank you. We're here seeking your approval of a purchase and sale agreement to acquire the real property and improvements generally known as the Quality Inn Motel located at 9719 Southeast Sunnyside Road in Clackamas. Dating back to the state of Oregon's launch of its Project Turnkey program in 2020, Clackamas County has been actively evaluating and pursuing opportunities to acquire a motel. In September of this year, following its submission of a Project Turnkey application in July, Clackamas County was notified that its application was approved to move on to phase two of the application process. Phase two encompasses property identification and subsequent due diligence, including acquisition cost negotiations, appraisal, environmental and physical inspection reports, and other pre-acquisition due diligence necessary to ensure suitability and quality of the property. Since that time, the county has been conducting site searches, issuing letters of intent to acquire property, engaging in cost negotiations, and conducting intensive public engagement with residents, businesses, and the public at large about its intent to leverage the opportunity of Project Turnkey funding to permanently expand critical transitional housing infrastructure in Clackamas County. The public engagement conducted to date has demonstrated broad community support and yielded valuable solutions-oriented input on how the county can ensure this project's success. Just yesterday, you affirmed your support for capitalizing on this funding opportunity to make a strategic capital investment in this critical infrastructure. Consistent with how the county's motel-based transitional housing program is operated today in lease sites, programming at this site will be operated by community-based organizations experienced in providing population-based services to individuals exiting homelessness. This could include single adults, families, individuals with non-acute behavioral health needs, those with physical health needs, and others. Services will include onsite staffing, as-needed security, case management, access to substance use and behavioral health treatment, physical health supports, food boxes, peer support, benefits acquisition, and housing navigation, all with the goal of helping participants obtain permanent housing as quickly as possible. The site has approximately 110 rooms and the purchase price is $15 million. Once the PSA is approved, the Oregon Community Foundation, which is administering the Project Turnkey program on the state's behalf, will pay the required $150,000 in earnest money and support the county in conducting due diligence, which it will also pay for. The county will have 75 days to conduct due diligence and Project Turnkey funding will be awarded at closing, following a determination of site suitability and quality. Depending on the amount of the award, the county can use other available local and state resources as needed to fund the remaining acquisition costs. The Metro Supportive Housing Services measure will provide ongoing funding for site operations and placements into permanent housing. With your approval today, Health Housing and Human Services and Public and Government Affairs will continue community engagement activities, which will include things like contacting adjacent property owners and making public presentations to interested stakeholder groups. Finally, closing of this transaction will be contingent on final written approval of the board to proceed with closing of the sale, as determined by the board in its sole discretion, and receipt of necessary funds to pay for the acquisition, including but not limited to Project Turnkey funds.
Thank you very much. Vaheed, would you like to comment on anything?
No, thank you Chair.
Thank you for the presentation. Commissioners, are there any comments or questions? Commissioner Scholl, you're up.
Yes, thank you for that briefing. I want to make something, I want you to clarify something, okay? This stage that we're at now is entering into phase two. And what you described is phase two, identification of property, due diligence. Am I right if I say, tonight, when we vote on this, this is not a commitment to purchase the building? This is a commitment by the board to engage in those things that are required by phase two. And that sometime in the future, that due diligence comes back, everything it looks like, it might be conducive to purchase, and we have input from our residents in the area, then only then does a board vote to decide whether we actually purchase the building. Is that correct?
That's correct. We're currently in phase two, and the things that you described are part of the phase two process. So we've identified a site, and the purchase and sale agreement allows us to go further into step two and evaluate the physical asset of the site and conduct the due diligence and additional community engagement.
Okay. That's clear, thank you.
And that's a 75-day period of due diligence that starts when?
It starts upon execution of the agreement.
Tonight.
By both parties, I believe. I'd have to defer to county attorney.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Savis.
Yeah, I just want to make a comment, and that is that I'm actually appreciate staff's hard work. Been my goal to get a site that is of sufficient capacity that we could put our staff and make sure that we have ideally, and that's a hope we end up with staff that can monitor the facility 24/7 and not have scattered sites with multiple staff at a higher expense, but have one site sizable enough to meet our needs. So this does it beyond what I envisioned initially. I'm glad we didn't pick the smallest hotel. So I'm glad to enter this stage and begin the due diligence and the public outreach on this.
Thank you. Commissioner Schrader.
Yeah, thank you both for all your hard work on this. It's been a while as we tried to navigate our way through the possibility of doing this, and I always say, hope is a risk that must be run. So I am very hopeful that we can get through phase two, get the due diligence done, find the building is going to indeed be a good investment for housing in our community, and I hope that folks that are here tonight to support this will keep an eye on it and help us with the surrounding community to do the kind of outreach we need to do. And I know that you as staff will provide the appropriate amount of care for these folks that are actually moving into that building. So thank you very much for your work so far.
Any other comments? Commissioner Scholl.
Thank you Chair Smith. I have one more question. This question has come to me from several constituents. At what time in this process will the board learn of your recommendation on the management, the type of management that this project, if purchased, will be managed under? Low barrier, high barrier? Because that's something that both the board and the residents of the county are going to be interested in knowing how that's going to be managed. Can you tell us what date in this process that will be made available to us?
Yeah Commissioner Scholl, certainly within the due diligence period, we can come back with more information about the program design. So one of the really critical pieces tonight is getting this approval so that we can get into the space and take a look at it and start working with our community-based organizations to get their recommendations about the program design, right? The physical layout, how the property looks and feels, those things inform how we do what we do there. And we're eager to get going on that, because this question gets asked, right? And there's some questions we can't answer until we take this step. So that's going to be part of this process.
Okay, and so that, what you come up with that management style, that's going to be part of the public outreach, and it's going to be made available to the people to get their input on it also, correct?
We can work with you on that. And one important piece is, we can work with our community-based organizations to develop the program design, but we also will need to conduct possibly subsequent procurement processes, right, to actually get a site operator. So it may be that we transition some of our existing program into that site, in which case, we've already procured for those services. But, so there's some things we will be able to outline for you during this period, and then there's other things that we'll need to follow up with after we actually acquire the site.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Fisher.
Thank you Chair Smith. I'm going to call out Commissioner Schrader here, because during the pandemic, we participated with the Association of Oregon Counties when this was being envisioned for the first round, and we both had the wonderful opportunity of being in the development stage of that, because this was an effort that started out of, I believe, in California, and it was making a big difference there. I can't remember what it was called in California, if it was called Turnkey or...
Home Key.
Home Key, that's right, Home Key. But it was a very innovative idea that Oregon grabbed onto very, very fast. And although we weren't able to get things together for the first round again through Association of Oregon Counties, and I say this loudly through the Association of Oregon Counties, Commissioner Schrader and I had again an opportunity to advocate with the legislature for round two, and to make it a little broader so that counties like ours wouldn't have so many restrictions and hurdles to jump over. So a lot of people looking for this to happen, so that this can be a very important part of the continuum. It isn't the total answer, but it's a very important part of the continuum to solve homelessness and to have that shelter available where it's appropriate. And so I want to applaud this county, this board, and especially our amazing staff for getting us to this stage. And I wish you all extreme success in proceeding to getting to, what's the last stage? Is it three? Or is it phase two? Is it three or four or five? Phase seven? Phase 10? Phase whatever, to get to that place so that I can be invited to the groundbreaking, okay? I'm getting some head nods there.
We'll get you an invitation.
Commissioner Savis.
I hope there's not a groundbreaking.
Well yeah, not a groundbreaking. Opening, opening, turnkey, yes, yes.
There you go. So I just want to, you know, Gary, I think when you introduced, or staff when introduced this, and it says very clearly, there's no county general funds and public dollars are public dollars. But I don't want to put you on the spot, Adam or Vaheed, could you just outline for the public the source, the state sources of these dollars, so people have an idea where the $15 million is coming from?
Yeah, of course. And so we anticipate needing to use braided funding, which is pretty common in what we do, right? We use all the resources available to get the work done. So we don't know today how much the Turnkey Award will be. We expect it to be somewhere between $5 and $10 million. And the reason that we don't know is because the state was allocated $50 million for Turnkey 2.0. They approved about 12 applications. So you can do the math, right? And they have around $5 million, a little less, per site. But what we know is that motel costs in the Portland, the greater Portland area are more than they are in rural Oregon. And Oregon Community Foundation and the state have articulated that acknowledgement, right, that they know our site will cost more than the average. So that's why I'm saying, we expect it to be between $5 and $10 million. We have other sources, including the state House Bill 5202 last year allocated some behavioral health housing funding, they allocated emergency shelter funding, we have Metro Supportive Housing Services dollars that could be used for a one-time capital investment. So once we know the amount of the Turnkey Award, we'll know how much further we need to go to close the gap. But the, most of these resources are one-time, they're specifically allocated for capital acquisition, and so this is the best strategic use of these dollars. And for the most part, it's use it or lose it, right? We have to capitalize on this opportunity.
Thank you. That's exactly what I wanted.
Any other comments from Commissioners? I will entertain a motion.
Chair Smith, I move for approval of the purchase and sale agreement with YCKC Hospitality LLC.
Second. Commissioner Savis has moved for approval of the purchase and sale agreement with YCKC Hospitality LLC. Commissioner Fisher has seconded the motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Tony, please call the poll.
Commissioner Scholl.
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader.
Aye.
Commissioner Savis.
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher.
Aye.
Chair Smith.
Aye, motion passes 5-0. Thank you very much Commissioners.
Thank you.
It's been a very long time coming. Gary, what's next?
Next is also a board discussion item under the Department of Human Resources, Clackamas County's Declaration of Impasse in its labor negotiations with the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, AFSMI, for the Department of Transportation and Development, Local 350-0. Stephen Madcor, County Counsel, will present.
Thank you Gary. Good afternoon, Commissioners. You have on your agenda the discussion on an impasse. That was an opportunity for this board to say that you have not reached an agreement with the bargaining units for AFSMI, DTD, and WES, and that you were to declare an impasse. We have news from our bargaining unit that that will not be necessary. The bargaining units report, and this is for DTD and WES both, but you're going to have two separate opportunities to hear that, because there are two separate departments, districts. What is being reported is that the county's last best final offer will be presented to the bargaining units, and they will vote on it within the course of the next few days. If they ratify it, i.e. vote to pass it, then it comes back to this board next Thursday to vote on it and ratify it at that point. If those things are accomplished, then you will have reached an agreement with AFSMI DTD and AFSMI WES. So we'll know within the course of the next few days what the result is of the two bargaining units' votes. Other than that, I do not have much other to report. I will say, as soon as we have additional information from our bargaining unit, I will certainly pass it on to the board. But this does avoid the need to declare an impasse, and this is good news.
Thank you Stephen Madcor. So Commissioners, we will not be considering the number one under human resources of declaring an impasse that is now excused. I'm not sure if that's the best word I'm using Gary, but we will not consider that tonight.
Correct.
Okay, thank you very much. I will now recess as a Board of County Commissioners and convene as a Water, Environment Services Board. Gary.
Thank you Chair. So this is as the Water, Environment Services Board, for the record, we're going through this process. This is also from the county's human resources on behalf of Water, Environment Services, Clackamas County's Declaration of an Impasse in its labor negotiations with the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, or AFSMI, Water, Environment Services, Local 350-4. Stephen, anything you'd like to add?
No, just the same thing. Our bargaining teams for both DDD and WES are the same. So the exact same thing we reported for DDD, WES, or AFSMI is applicable to AFSMI WES. Again, they will be voting on the last best final offer, voting to ratify it. And also, what I did omit was that the bargaining unit for AFSMI is going to recommend to its members that they ratify it. And that's an important fact as well. So they will be proceeding on the same path, and we should know within the course of the next few days whether or not they did indeed ratify it. But you'll have something for you next Thursday.
Great. Thank you very much Stephen. We will not consider this item either tonight. I will now adjourn as a Water, Environment Services Board and reconvene as a Board of County Commissioners. Gary, what's next?
Thank you Chair. Next is reading and adoption of a previously approved land use ordinance. Item one, adoption of a previously approved zoning and development ordinance amendments ZDO-273 on remand, short-term rentals. This was previously approved by the board at the November 2, 2022 land use hearing. Stephen Madcor, County Counsel, will present.
Thank you again Gary. Commissioners, this is, as Gary mentioned, something that was previously presented to you on November 22nd, and this is going to be the reading and passage by title only of an amendment to the Zoning and Development Code, and it will allow short-term rentals in the county in unincorporated areas outside of resource lands. And if it were voted on, you have the opportunity to have it effective immediately, have it effective 30 days, or have it affected at a later time period. That is at the board's discretion.
Thank you for that. Also, does this not entail a decision from the Oregon Court of Appeals that ruled that short-term rentals are not allowed in natural resource zones, meaning agricultural and forestry and timber zones, correct?
You are correct Chair, it was both Luba and the Court of Appeals, and it's on remand to the board.
And that's one of the reasons why we're taking this action tonight, because the court has ruled. Commissioner Savis.
Yeah, thank you Chair. I want to thank the, first of all, the Chair's recommendation here a while back for Commissioner Scholl and I and others to work on some language for short-term rentals. We are making progress. I would like to adjust the effective date, and I talked with the Administrator Gary Schmidt earlier before the meeting, and he suggested, was it May 30th Gary?
Correct, yes.
Effective date of May 30th, and that'll give us time to present and get the new language approved, and without any rushing. So I make that small amendment that we make the effective date May 30th.
Mr. Savis, I will entertain your motion with the adjustment of time.
Great, thank you Chair. I move we read ordinance, first of all, I guess I'll read ordinance ZDO-273 on remand by title only with the amendment of the effective date of May 30.
Of May 30th of 2023.
Seconded.
Commissioner Savis has moved that we read ordinance ZDO-273 on remand by title only, extending the date to May 30th, 2023. And was it Commissioner Scholl, did you second that?
I believe so.
Thank you very much. Any further discussion on this? Hearing none, Tony, would you please take the poll?
Commissioner Fisher.
Aye.
Commissioner Savis.
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader.
Aye.
Commissioner Scholl.
Aye.
Chair Smith.
Aye, motion passes 5-0. Thank you very much. The clerk, please read the ZDO by title only.
Ordinance number ZDO-273 on remand, and ordinance amending sections 202, 315, 316, 317, 510, 513, and 833 of the Clackamas County zoning and development ordinance, as amended for an effective date of May 30th, 2023.
Thank you Tony. Can I have a motion to adopt the ordinance?
So move.
Second.
Okay, I need to read the motion. I move, no, excuse me, Commissioner, Schrader has moved we adopt ZDO-273 on remand and ordinance amending sections 202, 315, 316, 317, 510, 513, and 833 of the Clackamas County zoning and development ordinance. It has been seconded by Commissioner Savis. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Tony, please call the poll.
Commissioner Scholl.
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader.
Aye.
Commissioner Savis.
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher.
Aye.
Chair Smith.
Aye, motion passes 5-0. Thank you very much County Commissioner. Gary, what's next?
Next is the consent agenda. Tony, would you please read the consent agenda?
Consent agenda, elected officials. Item one, approval of previous business meeting minutes for the Board of County Commissioners. Item two, approval of a board order authorizing purchase of 60 Panasonic FZ55 TUSP books, docking stations, and DVD drives from Daytech Incorporated. Purchase order value is $186,894. Funding is through budgeted county general funds for the Clackamas County Sheriff's Office. Technology services. Item one, approval of a certain new service level agreement with the West Lynn Wilsonville School District for new dark fiber connections. Total value is $265,500 for 10 years. Funding is through West Lynn Wilsonville School District. No county general funds are involved. Health Housing Human Services. Item one, approval of a revenue amendment increasing funding and updating program element language to the intergovernmental agreement with the Oregon Health Authority for operation as the local public health authority. Amendment net value is $56,965.15. Agreement value is now $16,086,638.46 for two years. Funding is through the Oregon Health Authority. No county general funds are involved. Item two, approval of an amendment extending the duration of the negotiation period of the ambulance contract with American Medical Response Northwest Incorporated. Amendment is a six-month extension at no cost. Contract value remains at $60 million over 10 years. Funding is through American Medical Response Northwest Incorporated. No county general funds are involved. Item three, approval of an amendment increasing funding of a non-federal subrecipient grant to Northwest Housing Alternatives for system diversion, homelessness prevention, and rapid rehousing services. Amendment value is $144,000 for one year. Grant value is increased to $744,000 for 5.25 years. Funding is through the Oregon Housing and Community Services Department. No county general funds are involved. Item four, approval of an amendment increasing funding of a non-federal subrecipient grant to Northwest Family Services for youth-focused system diversion, homelessness prevention, and rapid rehousing services. Amendment value is $55,200 for one year. Grant value is increased to $216,200 for 4.75 years. Funding is through the Oregon Housing and Community Services Department. No county general funds are involved. Item five, approval of an amendment modifying the scope of work of a master grant agreement from Oregon Housing and Community Services to administer homeless response and prevention services, service provider investment program, and Department of Energy bipartisan infrastructure legislation programs. Amendment has no fiscal impact. Grant value remains at $31,747,027. Funding is through the Oregon Housing and Community Services Department. No county general funds are involved. Item six, approval of an amendment increasing funding of a non-federal subrecipient grant to North Clackamas Women's Services for system diversion, homelessness prevention, and rapid rehousing services. Amendment value is $96,000 for one year. Grant value is increased to $656,000 for 5.25 years. Funding is... Funding is through the Oregon Housing and Community Services Department. No county general funds are involved. Madam Chair, that concludes the list.
Thank you, Tony. Yes, a big list. Does any Commissioner wish to remove anything from the consent agenda? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion.
Chair Smith. I move.
Oh. Commissioner Fisher, please comment.
Thank you. I didn't want to remove anything, but I just want to make an editorial comment. There's a lot of naysayers out there that says that local government isn't doing anything about housing and homelessness. All you have to do is listen. We listened for a long time. Did you hear it? Did you hear it? All that we're doing in Clackamas County, there's a lot there. We are doing a lot for homeless services in our community. And I just wanted to point that out for those who may be watching.
Good point. Good point. Commissioner Schrader, were you in the queue?
Yeah, I was going to move to approve the consent agenda and thank Commissioner Fisher for her comments, because it is true. We've done quite a bit. And Project Turnkey started at the Association of Oregon Counties under County Solutions, and we both worked on that. That was great. Great times.
And I will second. Oh, you beat me to it.
I believe Commissioner- Commissioner Schrader has moved we approve the consent agenda, and Commissioner Fisher has seconded that. Sorry, Scholl, you missed out. Okay. Commissioner Savas, you're in the queue.
Yeah, I appreciate Commissioner Fisher bringing that up. And just to highlight and put some emphasis on it, almost every week, the consent agenda includes something related to those services. So every, every week, we are approving something related to homeless services, without fail, it seems. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any further comments? Seeing none. Tony, please take the poll.
Commissioner Savas.
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader.
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher.
Aye.
Commissioner Scholl. Chair Smith.
Aye. Motion passes, 5-0. Thank you very much. Up next is public communication. This portion of the agenda shall be limited to the items of county business which are properly the object of work consideration and should be nonpartisan in nature, as the BCC is a nonpartisan governing body under Oregon revised statutes and county code. Testimony is limited to 3 minutes. Comments shall be respectful and courteous to all. As a reminder, you can email submissions for public communication at bcc@clackamas.us, and these will be accepted as part of the public record. However, we will not be reading them at this business meeting due to time constraints. I will now open the meeting for public testimony. I will take in-person testimony first. I have several blue cards. If anybody else is in the room and would like to testify, please come over here and fill out a card, and you will be considered. Thank you very much. Up first, Rick Dodge. Please come forward, sir. State your name, your area of residence, and you have 3 minutes.
After all that, I have to be here and say what I've got to say. I want to say thank you to each and every one of you. I watched yesterday's policy meeting just to get caught up. And you, each and every one of you represented us. And I want to thank you for the pushback that you're showing to Salem down there for some of the most ludicrous things I've ever heard of. And one of them is the off-street parking thing. I've never heard of it. I'm not going to go into that, because I want to, 2 things to talk about really quickly here. Commissioner Savas, on KGW, in a tolling meeting, or metro meeting, I'm not quite sure, anyway, was the only rational person in that room. Everybody else had, has, is so hell-bent on sending out this agenda, which totally disregarding the rest of us. And thank you for that. Now, after all this hotel talk just now, I want to talk about, real quickly, Mayor Adams in New York shocked me, surprised me with an announcement that he made here a while back about, and I'm going to use the word forcing, because I'm not, I don't recollect what word he used, but forcing mentally ill people who are on the streets into treatment. And I couldn't believe my ears, because they've got more problems than, as you know. So I want to take that forward here to our hotel business, because are we putting the heart, horse before the cart? Now, last night, I learned that there's over 700 people that are in need. And that's, that's not good. And I'm a softie. I may come up here, and you may listen to me and say, no, you're not. You're just a, I'm just trying to be real here. Now, it's also my understanding that the Vet Village may get expanded. If so, why cannot that, why not expand that into the turnkey situation, if I'm saying that correctly? I mean, a life is priceless, obviously, but $150,000 to, maybe closer to $200,000 per unit, when we can expand like the Veterans Village? I, I'm a little, I appreciate the fact that the amount of money that's being spent will-
Thank you, Mr. Dodge.
Okay.
We understand you perfectly. Yes. Up next, Story Long.
Good evening. Thank you for listening to us. My name is Story Long, and I am a resident of Clackamas County and a pastor at Storyline Community. And I'm here in my green with several other in the back to show our support of Turnkey. And I want to continue the applause started by Chairwoman Fisher. I want to affirm that applause for all of you, and just not only for the decision today, but for the work you've put in and the way you've spoken about this just very cogently over the past few months. Chairwoman Fisher spoke about this as a continuum, and that is true, but it's an important one. It's one we've spoken to, that this is, we know it is very research-backed, that housing first works, that that isn't cart before the horse. That is actually like, people thrive when you give them a secure place to land, even for a temporary amount of time. So thank you for putting in the work there and the research there to help make that happen and to live into the value you've spoken, that you want to see homelessness be brief and non-recurring, and emergency shelter is a great first step in that. So thank you for meeting that on the continuum. And that was just affirmed for me, actually, just this past couple of weeks, because this is where my brain is living now, is like thinking about my neighbors in this position. I work 3 jobs. My husband has a full-time job and health insurance. And I had a sudden medical dental need. That was $1,300 that we had not planned for. That is my rent for 1-bedroom apartment, is $1,300. Now luckily, I have 3 jobs. My husband has dental insurance and a full-time job. And still, one of those things being different could have made the difference in us not being able to pay rent. Like, if I lost 1 job, if he didn't have the insurance, there goes rent. And I immediately thought of my neighbors who only have 2 jobs, who their spouse left them, who have 4 kids. Anything that could have tipped that in the other direction. And the difference something like this could make in an emergency situation like that. It would make the difference in their houselessness situation being chronic and recurrent and traumatizing, or being a one-time thing, because they have this soft place to land. Chairwoman Schrader, you spoke of hope as a risk that we need to run. And I hope for a future where I don't have to choose between medical care and housing. But in the meantime, knowing that my neighbors will have this place to land if they have to make that very hard, impossible decision, is something I'm very grateful for and proud to be in a county that is making strides towards that, to say, you'll have a soft place to land if you need it, if this emergency happens. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. We're going forward. Yes, you may, Mr. Schrader.
Just one clarification. Hope is a risk that must be run, is not an original quote. I use it all the time, and it's the Christian writer George Bernardos. And if you Google him, you could see, one of his books is The Diary of a Country Priest, and another of other very moving books. So George Bernardos, one of my favorite authors. Okay, thank you.
Up next, Anna Hoesley.
Hello, Commissioners. I am Pastor Anna Hoesley, and I live in Oak Grove. I'm also the pastor and organizer of Storyline Community and the Clackamas Land and Housing Cohort. I too am here with a collection of neighbors, people of faith, service providers, and constituents. Go ahead and wave if you're here in support of- Oh, that was fun. I like them. And we just want to say thank you for your leadership on this, because it takes leadership to build the housing infrastructure that our community needs to stabilize. We are coming off a critical deficit of affordable housing, and then hit after hit after hit of collective emergencies, which means many of our neighbors have literally no place to call home. We need more of the stable ground that we're building here. We need places of transition that give folks breath to get back on their feet, instead of spiral deeper into the chaos and trauma of houselessness. And you have just said yes, well, actually, you said aye, to so many of those neighbors. I'm thinking of one that I heard about from our service provider, who was in one of our temporary hotel programs. And their spouse had passed away, they lost their housing, and they struggled to engage in everyday activities. After outreach and relationship and trust was built, they were moved into the motel program after being homeless, and are now permanently housed and thriving again, and have found both housing and community in those spaces. You have also said yes, really, to our whole community, because you've done this in a way that is incredibly fiscally sound use of taxpayer dollars. Many of our hotels have been used by our service providers for hotel shelter. Quality Inn is one of those that have been used, which is a good emergency measure, but it's an incredibly expensive use of dollars in the long run. So because of a very costly nightly market rate, so I'm really happy about that. And when we don't own the hotel, we really see again and again that we don't have the ability to manage it in the same way that we could when we own it. I was so thrilled to hear what Adam was saying about the onsite staff and security and case management, addiction recovery, and navigation that'll be offered as a part of those services, which increases the stability of everyone who is there, and then the entire community around it. What we know is that when our neighbors stabilize, our whole community stabilizes, which is, again, why your yes is really for all of us. So we show up today, and we'll continue to show up until this reaches completion, and after too, once this hotel is in place, because we believe it takes our whole community to rise together, and we are here for it. Thank you for being here for it too, today.
Thank you very much. Up next, Dez Valdez.
Thank you, Commissioners. My name is Dez Valdez, and I am here to speak on Project Turnkey. I work with youth throughout Clackamas County as part of the Southeast Youth Collective through the, through Storyline and through the Clackamas Land and Housing Cohorts. And I just want to thank you so much for your vote today. As a rent burden young person myself, who knows so many people who are on the knife edge, week to, month to month, in paying for rent, and as a person who works with youth who are also often in this situation, who find themselves housing insecure, this decision means so much to me and to my community. I'm so grateful for the work that you have taken regarding public engagement, to really listen to us, to hear us out, week to week, and throughout these surveys, through all of the work that you have done on this engagement. I believe it was 70% of the responses to online surveys have been in favor. So we know that our community really wants this and supports this. So I'm so grateful that you were listening to these voices that continue to show up and to speak up for this really important project. I understand there's still some hesitancy in that this isn't a completely finalized deal, but I also wanted to, I just wanted to continue to affirm this decision and to encourage, and really, I trust that you will rely on the facts and communicate these to the public as you go forward, as you continue public communication, that you will be able to make sure that everyone is aware of the benefits to having this facility. So I just wanted to thank you again so much for your vote, and for providing, like my friend said, a soft place to land for so many folks. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Up next, Les Poole. Please state your name, area of residence, and you have 3 minutes.
Les Poole. Lived in the county a long time. I just want to start by saying, I remember when Paul was elected, and I was talking with him before he took office, and he'll probably recall this, this is kind of fun. I said, you know Damascus is, it's not being planned, right? It's going to blow up in your face when you take office. And I said, the extension of Milwaukee Light Rail into the county is not really going to fly, and it's going to blow up in your face. And he agreed, and both of those things happened. And then I said, I'm going to work real hard, and I'm going to get evening meetings. And Paul said, good luck with that. And about 10 years ago, I just stayed after it. And when the previous chair took over, evening meetings disappeared. And they're back. I appreciate them. I think this is also an opportunity, not so much for this evening, but in the future, to have working folk, our youth, come here and not be intimidated by this place. I've got some thoughts about Project Turnkey, and I appreciate all of the general support for Project Turnkey. But what's lacking is specific support for this location, or any of the locations that have been proposed in the past. And I fear that there hasn't been any outreach in the neighborhood. If I was to walk through that neighborhood and talk to those business owners, probably none of them have any idea that we're even this far down the road. I was troubled last week when I announced that this is an odd situation, because while we need to do something, at the same time, it seemed like an invitation to trouble that any entity that qualified for Project Turnkey 2.0 financing or funding could get a grant and then figure out where to spend it. And so I'm just concerned about how much money we're spending, whether or not this will be a housing first, which means if they're doing drugs or whatever, we're just going to put them in there. A housing-first model right next to Clackamas Town Center, invitation to trouble. So I'm not here to totally oppose Project Turnkey, but I think a lot of the enthusiasm is premature, to say the least. A certain amount of neighborhood or acceptance by the community is a requirement for this. And while folks have been here this evening, I doubt any of them live within 500 feet of the place. And so what does community acceptance, or what is acceptable outreach in any of these? Because I fear that you're going to be hearing from folks, and this may blow up in your face, and we'll find ourselves back trying to look at the Clackamas Inn. So not being cynical, but very concerned about what we're doing.
Thank you, Mr. Poole, for coming forward.
You bet. Thank you.
We have heard a lot of testimony over many months on several locations that, for this Project Turnkey, and we have listened wholeheartedly. And the people who are in opposition know that, because we have not selected a hotel in a residential area. We've been very mindful of that. And I will say once again, and I have said many, many times, to do nothing is not an option. And this Board will not do nothing regarding the homeless situation. I don't like this any more than the rest of you. You know what? I'm 65 years old, and quite frankly, I didn't think my career would go down this path of having to- to spend so much time and effort, thinking, and reading, and listening about people who cannot find a place to live, because either they are mentally ill, they are without a job, they had bad circumstances coming their way through a divorce, or a death of a spouse, and they find themselves living in a car with their two kids. That is unacceptable to the naysayers out there. And I have just grown weary, and I have grown tired of people coming up, Mr. Poole, and misrepresenting facts.
What facts, ma'am? Excuse me for being out of order.
You are out of order, sir. It's my turn to talk. We are moving forward with this, and people get hung up on, "Oh, housing first," or "Let's fix the mental health first," or "Let's fix the drug addiction first." It doesn't work that way. It doesn't work that way, because these people, you need to look at them maybe through a different line. Now, I said last, this just this week, 723 people have been identified as homeless. The aspirational goal is to get all of them housing. That's not going to work, because I think we need to be realistic, because people have free will. People have choices. Not all the people who are homeless will come into any of these structures we have available to them. Matter of fact, as I said earlier this week, we had one person leave the Veterans Village. We had one person leave Tuck Willis Springs, because they decided they did not want to be housed, and they are back on the streets. That is their decision. But I think what a compassionate society does is trying to fix this problem. I had a very interesting conversation with Mayor Wheeler last week. And you know about the, the taxation of our supposedly high-income earners for housing in Clackamas County? Well, he's trying to steal that from us. Clackamas County citizens are paying taxes. You voted no against it, but guess what? The other two counties passed it, so you're paying the taxes. And Mayor Wheeler wants that money for his tent caps in Portland. And I said, "No." Nice try. The money that's collected in Clackamas County will stay in Clackamas County, and we will spend it to try to help society's most worst problem, as I see it. And Commissioner Savas was very eloquent this week when he said, "If we don't do this, we are getting overflow from Portland and Multnomah County into Clackamas County. People are coming here because it's a nice place to live. Our population is growing and growing. Our services are being stressed and stressed." And I'll reiterate once again, we did listen in not purchasing the other two hotels, and not going into a residential area. We are next to a hospital. We are next to a bus line. We can have groceries delivered to these people who are in here. And I think, quite possibly, this is the very best location that we've been able to come up with, within the price range and a willing seller. We've had, we had a dossier this thick of hotels that could be under consideration in Clackamas County. And we also had comparables across the county. And you know, I will say this, if this doesn't work, we have a $15 million asset, that I'm most certain that we can sell for at a profit a couple of years down the line, because there is competition for these. And if it doesn't work, we sell it, take our money, pay it back to the taxpayers. But at least we have to try. And will we make mistakes? Will we be perfect? Of course, we're not going to be perfect in this, because we're dealing with human beings. And we're all struggling to try to find solutions that a majority of citizens in Clackamas County want fixed. Gary, we, our evening business meetings are returning, and are they on the second Tuesday, or second Thursday?
You haven't decided that formally yet, but it'll be the second or third Thursday of the month, yes?
Yes, I think, depending on the Commissioner's schedule, so we are having that. Thank you very much, Commissioner Savas.
Yeah, just want to build on the Chair's comments a little bit. I don't think that anyone's got the magic solution, or there is a solution that's going to solve this human crisis that we're in. I will say that I'm, I'm, until we get the expenses of what it costs to operate this facility, certainly know what the likely sale price of this particular hotel's going to be, but once we get the operating expenses, we'll be, I'll be able to do the math, we'll all be able to do the math, and determine how and when it pays for itself. But I'm relatively confident it will pay for itself within five years, six years maximum, as far as the rents we're currently paying right now for the overnight stays in hotels, at 90 rooms, approximately 50 that we contract out, and the other 40 that nonprofits are contracting out with supportive housing services. So, I'm confident that there's a, there's a return on that investment. Now, as far as the investment, will it solve the problem that we're trying to solve? And for some, yes, it will. And I, I watch every day, I read every day, what's all other jurisdictions are doing, and certainly, there's a lot of focus on the city of Portland. Mayor Wheeler has expressed publicly that they know, they recognize that approximately half of the people that are living on the street are not ready to go into whatever it is, whether it's a, a temporary apartment or permanent housing, they're not ready for a roof over their head. And I think a lot of those folks, we, we assume a lot of them, if not all of them, are chronically homeless. And we don't know what they're suffering from entirely. Every case is unique, whether it's mental health issues, or drug, alcohol, challenges and all. But, you know, the, the remedies for that are multiple. Again, there's not one solution. I did want to just quickly say to, on that note, there's not one solution to Mr. Dodge's question about why not the Vets Village, why this. And the, the Vets Village is, or the addition to it, not for vets, but nearby, is a different type of, of solution, and not all one solution. There's not one solution for all. So, it's just part of, part of the, the matrix of housing options we're trying to, to, to meet and accommodate. Some people that need that transition, again, aren't ready for a roof, but maybe something like the Village, and we found that out. They're veterans, for example. We found out that that type of model is a step towards a roof, whether it's a hotel room, or whether it's a apartment. So, it's just accommodating their particular needs, and getting them to decompress from the lifestyle they've lived for a long period of time. So, again, I think it's, it's a very tough, very tough thing. I read and watch and listen every day, Saturday, Sunday, every day, what we're all doing. And we, being all the jurisdictions trying to find solutions. And a lot of it's economically driven. We had a couple people speak this, this morning about the crisis, about the $1,300, you know? Someone could have one car breakdown, and that's could be the difference between them, them not being able to pay their rent. So, we have an economic crisis. It's not really brought on by drugs, or alcohol, or mental health. It's literally brought on by the economics. And this is an expensive region to live in, and we know that, and we have to, and I've been saying this for a long time, we need to get ahead of some of the things that aggravate the cost of housing in this area. It should not be one of the most expensive places in the country to live, but it is one of the most expensive places. I've said a lot. I'll stop there, Chair.
Thank you very much for your comments, Commissioner Savas. Up next, Fumi Tosun. Did I say that right? Please correct my pronunciation, sir. Please state your name, your area of residence, and you have three minutes.
Thank you, Chair and Commissioners. My name is Fumi Tosu. I live in Oak Grove, and I'm the founder and director of a small community organization called Dandelion House. We are part of a national faith-based movement called the Catholic Worker Movement. And we work primarily with unhoused individuals in our community. Thank you so much for, for taking this next important step on the continuum. Thank you, Chair Smith, for your impassioned defense of that step. You know, it's, it's, it's not only the right thing to do for a compassionate society, as my neighbor Anna mentioned, it's, it's also a really responsible and cost-effective way of using our taxpayer money, not only, as you mentioned, in relation to the nightly rents that we're paying now, but my understanding is it's per unit $80,000 or so cheaper than Vets Village, which has come up in testimony or public comment today. You know, just in the last four days, I've received three phone calls, not from service providers or organizations, but from friends who themselves have friends in housing crisis. This is happening to, to my friends, to my community. One was regarding a mother who works full-time in Clackamas Town Center, at one of the stores there, and she and her 10-year-old son were being evicted that day. Another was in regards to a young man in his 20s, who was just coming out of a drug rehabilitation center, finally clean, sober, had his, you know, withdrawal medication, so he wasn't having those physical needs to, to use again, but didn't have a place to go. We were actually able to, to house him at our house, in Dandelion House. He had hit rock bottom, you know, a month or two prior, after spending six months on the streets. He started using, just to cope with the reality of being on the streets. And he was so excited to finally be clean and drug-free, and kind of reclaim his life. And then that's what he's trying to do here. The first mom and son, I was not able to help. I'm not sure what came of them. And the third was a phone call I received as I was driving here, and haven't been able to return the call yet, and I will after this, this meeting. But I'm grateful for your action today, because I'm hopeful that in the future, as I get these calls, some will be able to help at, at Dandelion House, and others, a place like Turnkey could be life and death. For somebody who, if they return to the streets, it's game over, right? This person that's, that's with me, I said he hit rock bottom, was, he, he realized he couldn't do this any longer, when the person, the next tent over, froze to death.
Thank you very much for coming forward.
Thank you so much.
We have one more card. Is there anybody in the room who wishes to testify? Please come forward. Is it Jolene Monroe? I can't read your writing. Please come forward, ma'am. And you've been here before, and we do appreciate you, by the way.
I appreciate you guys.
State your name and your area of residence.
What I want to make clear is, we're not opposed, I think, sorry.
Would you pull the microphone closer? Thank you.
Most of us that are worried about this, we're not opposed to helping the homeless. When I talked to the district DA, and he told me it was going to be the worst 20%, the criminals that they can't, that keep coming in and out of the system, that those were the people they were going to put into Project Turnkey, that's when we were informed that during that meeting. That's when we got worried. We're not opposed to housing women with children that are living, none of us want that. Anybody that is not a criminal, that's not violent, but we have this repeat offender at Greenhouse Square who's been violent, those are the people that we're worried about. So, I think what, what scares us is we still haven't seen a list of, okay, these are the requirements for these people to get into this residence. If we could see a list and know that they were nonviolent people, that they, do you see what I'm saying? If they weren't a danger to us in our situation, bring everybody in. Of course, we want to help everybody. So, so I just wanted to throw that out there, first of all. But are you saying that you're not looking at the comfort suites in the Clackamas Inn and Suites any longer? Is that what it is?
Correct.
So, you're moved on to the other property then?
Yes, because we heard testimony from the neighbors that they didn't want it in their neighborhood.
Okay. Well, thank you. I fully appreciate that.
They did listen.
I think having it next to Kaiser is probably a very good idea. Yeah.
And like I say, none of this is perfect, going forward. A list of criteria for entry into this, you're homeless, and you have problems. And they're coming in. Now, are you familiar with the federal court decision called the Boise Decision? Let me explain that, and how our hands are tied somewhat, and we've explained this a lot. And it was a decision on, I believe, one of the circuit courts, Ninth Circuit Court, was it Ninth Circuit Court?
It was the Ninth Circuit, you're correct.
Yeah, the Ninth Circuit Court, who ruled in that if people are homeless, and/or if they're trespassing, local law enforcement cannot go out in sweeps and pick them up and put them in jail unless there is a place, a transitional housing, or a shelter to put them in. One of the reasons for Project Turnkey, and when you're talking about the District Attorney, Assistant District Attorney Bill Stewart, he talks very eloquently about that. And that's why he's working so hard, like you say, on the 20% of the habitual people. And when I said earlier, we're not going to solve 100% of this, and you make a good point. If we have a location like Project Turnkey, it could possibly loosen up law enforcement's shackles to do something with these people who you're concerned about. And we are, we understand that, but we have to move forward to do something on this, on this program. So, I thank you, and keep coming forward, and keep expressing your concerns. Adam Brown, the gentleman who testified before, is available for anybody to talk to about, quote, "requirements" or "expectations." I mean, as far as I'm concerned, if somebody is going to go into this, it is expected of them that they will perform. And performance means, first of all, we have to identify why they're homeless. And there's many reasons for that. Most recent study is the high cost of housing has led to the greatest degree of homelessness. Well, once you're on the street, stuff happens. Okay? If I was living on the street, yeah, I would probably be subject to crime, mental illness, and if I was subject to mental illness, I would be self-medicating. And it's just a whole downward spiral that happens. And so, we help these people along the way. A lot of them have lost their identification that keeps them from getting a job. A lot of them don't have clean clothes, and they are not groomed properly, so they are not attractive to employers. That's a very big deal. We have success stories after success stories, which we will be bringing forward, and we have talked to some people. But we are offering a leg up and try to help people to get on. But like I say, we will, we will never reach, I don't believe we'll reach 100%, but Commissioner Fisher is positive, we will. And I said, Commissioner Fisher, you need to prove me wrong.
I'm going to do it, Toody, and you're going to be part of that.
Okay, yes. But Jolene, thank you very much for coming forward.
Thank you.
We have one other card, Debbie Stromberg. Would you please come forward? And I did have your card here, sorry about that. Please state your name, your area of residence, and you have three minutes.
I'm Debbie Stromberg. I live in Milwaukee, and I have been, for nearly 20 years, the youth leader at Creator Lutheran Church in Clackamas. We are now part of the Southeast Portland Youth Collective, along with six other churches. And just wanted to share with you, in the 20-ish years that I have been doing youth ministry, the difference in, especially when I was a youth, far more than 20 years ago, I anticipated going into a home one day. It's different with youth now. More than half of our youth in the youth collective are, are people of color, low income. They don't have that expectation that they will move into a home. Most of the youth in the past 20 years, really, have had to move back in with parents, if they have parents. So, this is a concern for them. And kids, what, another thing that's really different, over the 20 years that I have been a youth leader, kids are very in, in tune. They're very concerned about what's going on in the world. They're very curious. Their request, every year, we let them guide the topic for the coming year. Their request, two years ago, is, "We want to understand how to make a difference. We want to understand the political process. How do we make sure more people are cared for well?" And, and that's the kind of questions they're asking. It's a very different environment. And I just want to say, not only am I really involved with the youth who are paying close attention, we're actually teaching them this organizing system. They are so curious, and they're following this turnkey process. And I'm so delighted in the vote today. I'm so appreciative, Chair Smith, of your really good clarification along the way. It feels to me like... It feels to me like you really have been listening. I've been mostly online, paying attention, and I really am grateful for the care that went into the selection of a location that is not in a community. I've been listening to the neighbor concerns as well. So I see the really careful listening you've been doing, and I really appreciate it because I can go back and say to them, it's such a no-brainer to the youth. There's money available, it makes a difference to get the care. Why would anyone not want that? I'm so grateful to be able to go back to the youth and say, yes, they are figuring it out. I really appreciate all of you, the care that you've taken. And I just want to take this opportunity, especially Sonia Fisher, to say, we have, as a youth group, as our Madres de Corazon, I'm very involved with a Spanish-speaking group, aware of your care for the people at the margins, and your service has been so appreciated. Thank you so much.
Very nice. Thank you very much for coming forward. I don't have any more blue cards. Anybody in the room can still submit one if you would like. Tony, who do we have online?
I will begin with Bill Weir. Mr. Weir, please state your name and area of residence. You will have three minutes. Mr. Weir, while you are not muted, we cannot hear you. Mr. Weir, you may begin at your pleasure.
Tony, do we have anybody else in the queue? We'll come back to Bill.
I will. He is, at the moment, the only person, so let me see if I can sort that out.
We'll just wait. Anybody else want to come up and talk? Tell us what, you know what Christmas plans are?
Mr. Weir, you are muted. Mr. Weir?
You know, sometimes those computers have a mind of their own.
Technology is a wonderful thing.
And a frustrating one.
And well, Bill, if you can hear us.
Mr. Weir?
Mr. Weir?
Hmm, he's talking. I suggest we move on, Tony. Thank you very much for trying. Mr. Weir, if you can hear us, maybe you could submit your testimony via email, and it will become part of the record. There's always next week, if you would be so good to call in. Okay, thank you very much. I will now close the public portion of the meeting, and we will move on. Gary, who's up next?
Next chair is County Administrator Update. That's me. I like to use this time to share good news of our county staff. First, I want to recognize our 911, our County 911 Staff Member Dispatcher Tammy Abernethy, who is working at the end of a long shift on Thanksgiving morning, when a call came in about a shooting in the Boring Area. While Tammy could have easily gone home and spent Thanksgiving with her family, she chose to stay on the job for an additional three hours to help this call be resolved. She was recognized by the Sandy Police Department for her instrumental work in helping to secure that incident and to help support that family who was in that moment of crisis. So thank you to Tammy, as an example of expert, informative, appreciated response to help support the local public safety in that response. Next, a note of appreciation for our road crews. A gentleman named Kevin in Clackamas wrote to us, "I want to give a big shout-out to the street sweeper who came down our street. He was clearly being thoughtful and diligent and wanted to be sure he did a good job." And he did a great job. Far too often, it's easier to complain about what you don't like and forget to praise people that seem to care about their work. Please tell him thanks that his work was noticed." So this employee that's being referenced is Colby Taylor in our Department of Transportation and Development. So thank you, Colby, for the outstanding community service. That is my update today, commissioners.
Thank you very much. We will now move on to Commissioner Communication. Commissioner Schrader, you're up first.
Well, thank you, Chair. I do want to assure folks about Project Turnkey. I recently returned from the Large Urban County Caucus meeting in Illinois at Wills County and met with a number of other commissioners from across the nation. This is not the first time what we're calling Project Turnkey has been done. And as far as we can tell from the reports in the National Association of Counties, it has been a very successful program across the state and across the nation. So even though I know we may appear worried, so far, the information, the data, the information we're getting shows that it is a really good viable alternative to moving people into transitional housing. So I do want to assure you, colleagues, that the information seems to be there, and it seems to be positive. The other piece that I learned when I was in Wills County, Illinois, was that they have probably one of the best health centers that I've ever seen, that includes not only primary care, but it's a brand-new facility. It's in a relatively, relatively speaking, low-income neighborhood, and it provides everything from early childhood to mental health to public health, plus all the other kinds of things that our public health departments have to do, including water testing, restaurants, the whole nine yards. It was the most beautiful facility. I had an opportunity to tour it with my colleague Denise Winfrey, who is the president of the National Association of Counties. This is in her county, and they have done a phenomenal job. So I hope at some point in the future, we can all get a chance to see that facility and maybe take a look at it, and look at how we can consolidate all those kinds of public health functions into one area. It was pretty fantastic. The fun part of it was that we did go to the Joliet Museum, where they have the original suits of Dan Aykroyd and John Belushi from the Blues Brothers. Okay? I kid you not. And evidently, in the movie, I haven't watched it in a long time, I guess they got thrown into Joliet Prison. So the Joliet Museum has a whole theme of Blues Brothers with the original suits. And I did buy my son-in-law and my grandson a Blues Brother t-shirt for Christmas, t-shirts for Christmas, so they're going to like that. Finally, in regards to homelessness, I'd like to talk about something that is happening here for the first time, here in Oregon City. And there's going to be, I'm going to try and pull it up here real quick. Okay, there is an invitation out there. I'm sure a number of you already know about it, about the Longest Night, a homeless person's candlelight vigil. Here in Oregon City at Liberty Plaza, it will be starting at 12:21 at 6:00 PM and be finished by 7:00 PM in the evening. And it's the 32nd Annual Longest Night Memorial honoring 13 lives to be held on December 21st. And so all of our community members are invited to be there. It will be outdoors at the Liberty Plaza and Main Street. Street parking is free in downtown Oregon City. And additional parking, you can go up to the top of the elevator and take a quick ride down. They are asking that those who attend to bring warm socks and winter coats to donate to our homeless neighbors to help them through the winter. In Clackamas County, 13 people, it says here, have died in this time period, homeless residents from January through September 2022. 2022 does mark the first time that Clackamas County will host this local event. It is co-hosted by the Homeless Solutions Coalition of Clackamas County and the Downtown Oregon City Association. And I know Adam is very aware of it, and Fahed Brown, who speaks very eloquently, said, "We want to remember the dignity and value of our friends and neighbors' lives that have been lost and recommit to the urgency of our work to house everyone." So please go if you can. I'm going to be visiting family, but I asked Fahed, and he did assure me this is a national program, so I'll be attending the vigil in Boston. And go ahead and hopefully bring some photos back for all of you. But thank you, colleagues. I think the work we do here on this issue is incredibly important, and it's some of the finest work I've seen done in recent times. So that's it.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner Schrader. Commissioner Shaw, you're up.
Yes, good evening, Clackamas County. On Turnkey, I'm encouraged that we're making some progress, but we'll learn soon, hopefully, about the management plan, and also we'll learn more from the local residents on their ideas about the project. I have compassion for those who are homeless and require assistance. You know, just from the metro supportive housing services measure, some $300-plus million have been, in taxes, have been collected since early last year. And that doesn't include the hundreds of millions of dollars coming in from the federal government in the way of grants to be used for supportive housing. But I also have responsibility to ensure that the quality of life of our residents and their neighborhoods remain safe and secure, and that children can play outside and be safe. All these concerns have to be balanced. Des Valdez came up and spoke to us today and said that she's concerned about the youth who are homeless, and these projects need to be safe and secure for them, too. I was encouraged this week to hear Mayor Wheeler talk about the need for some homeless people who reject help to be mandated to mental health and addiction help. I think that's an important step. On the protection of children, on Thursday, December 1st, the Milwaukee Police Department hosted a Clackamas County inter-agency sting operation that resulted in the arrest of eight people who had been using social media to lure children for sex. The Milwaukee Police Department, the Clackamas County Sheriff's Office, Interagency Task Force, SWAT, Clackamas County District Attorney, Oregon City Police, Malala Police, Sandy Police, Lake Oswego Police, Clackamas County Parole and Probation, all participated in the sting operation, along with the FBI. Milwaukee Police is concerned that there might be more victims out there, and I encourage everybody to get involved. If they have any information, dial 503-78 and talk to the Milwaukee Police Department. For those of you who have other, if you observe other crimes, our Clackamas County Sheriff's Office website has got a crime reporting page on the website. If there's not an emergency, use that. If it's an emergency, of course, or if there's a crime in progress, call 911. It's going to take everybody working together to help our police to keep Clackamas County safe. On elections, I'd like to thank all the people of the county who helped our Elections Office in this last general election that was certified just before 5 December. I really appreciate everybody's help. It takes a lot of people to do a general election. Thank you again. This week, we attended the UA 290 Plumbers and Steam Fitters and HVAC Union for the Columbia Pacific Building Trades Council Holiday Party, and it was a really good time. I really appreciated talking to all those folks, members of the union, and I thank them all for their work to build the built environment here in Clackamas County. And for those of you who have young people, or not-so-young people, who might be looking for a new line of work, contact the union. They have some really great jobs, and everybody seems to really like working for them. For the thought of the day, the government works best when decision-making authority is close to home with influence of the electorate at the lowest possible level. So Article 1, Section 8 enumerated powers of the U.S. Constitution was included by the founding fathers to ensure that the federal government stayed limited. Anything not listed in Article 1, Section 8 was supposed to be states' rights. And if I suggest to you that if we were living within the confines of Article 1, Section 8, your taxes would be much lower, and our ability here in Oregon to manage our own resources and even determine our education system would be much greater. So I encourage everybody, contact your new representatives in January, and let them know how you feel about this issue of limited government and states' rights. I thank you all for coming this evening and sharing your ideas. If anybody has any questions for me, or if I can help you with anything, send me an email at mshawl@clackamas.us. I look forward to hearing from you. And if I don't talk to you before, so have a good Christmas. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Shaw. Commissioner Fisher, you're up.
Thank you, Chair Smith. So I've had the wonderful opportunity for, gosh, years and years and years now that I've been on the commission, watching and participating in what started off as the Oregon City Homeless Coalition, then evolved into the Clackamas County Homeless Commission, Coalition, and it's really a group, you know, on the ground. And I appreciate what Commissioner Shaw says about local. You know, it's all, things happen at the local level. And here in Clackamas County, we just have such a committed group of folks, from the faith community, from nonprofits, from, you know, youth advocates that are working with children who don't have places to live, and really working tirelessly to get them a second home, is one program that I'm really inspired about. But I encourage my commissioners to drop in. You can just, you know, those meetings are virtual, you can drop in, you can listen, you can hear the great work. What I was most inspired about, and oh my gosh, I was smiling ear to ear, and nobody could see me because I did have my camera off, but our staff is, you know, they're staffing so many, and we're doing, we're doing, we're implementing. I know we hear it. Adam comes, he tells us, but, I mean, when you're in those meetings, you can listen to what's really happening. They are staffing people every week from the built to zero. They have the names, the names, we're keeping the data, we have the people. They are staffing, they're connecting, they are following them, they are working, they're having the outreach workers, and we're building the system. But while we're building the system, the work is actually happening. And I will not be participating in that group as a commissioner, because I will be leaving this commission, not by choice, but by the will of the people. But I really want to encourage you, please, to step on in. It's a, you know, from a 1 o'clock to a 1:30 once a month. And Lynn Deschler, who we all know, who's organized our point in time count for 20 years, has been leading this group, and along with Dan Fowler, it is now a nonprofit organization, has grown so much over this time, and it's pretty inspiring. So I want to just share that with you and encourage you to get those stories. Because when we're at this policy level, we have the responsibility to set the overall policy, but to really lean in and understands how things are working on the streets and to really hear the stories that are affecting people's lives, that really helps inform us to make the best decisions possible. So that's what I have for today.
Thank you, Commissioner Fisher. As we wind down this new year, I mean, this year into the new year, I'm very thankful for many, many blessings that I've received in my life. And not the smallest is the fact that I was elected to serve on this board from the people of Clackamas County. And it's a very great honor to represent all people in Clackamas County with as much compassion and hope and vigor as we can possibly muster. I do consider it a great honor. Sometimes I say I'm the most blessed person in Clackamas County because I was born in Oregon City, and I get to work in Oregon City. And I live on the family farm on the very end of Beaver Creek Road, and I come to work at Beaver Creek Road. And I try very hard to represent the greatest possible number of people for the greatest possible good, and at times, we tend to run into conflicts. Not because we're not a compassionate people, it's because oftentimes, when government especially moves forward on an area that is it's because oftentimes when government especially moves forward on an area that has never been tried or tested before, there's dissension and there's fear and there's a lot of pushback to that because we've never done it before. Many of the things we're doing in Clackamas County, from building a new fair barn, to the Founder's Clinic at Clackamas Community College, to our transportation and maintenance facility on Beaver Creek Road, to building a new courthouse, to trying to engage the public, trying to figure out the homeless situation, has not been done before. And we really are at a precipice in our society of moving forward with the best possible outcomes Sometimes I get very passionate, maybe too much. And it was brought to my attention this week that maybe I was using a term that has been not, hmm, that has been in conflict with some of my commissioners. And the term I just said, "my commissioners." And I apologize for using that term. And if you know me very well, you often hear me talk about my family, my daughter, my husband, my dear friends, you know, my farm, my parents, and my father who's still living, my many nieces and nephews, and my many grandchildren that my mother had. And I brought that term here and I will assure you, I did not realize that it was offensive to some of the colleagues sitting at this dais. I will not use that term anymore. I will instead refer to the commission and/or BCC. Thank you for correcting me. I take great pride in what we do as, working together as a team, and that's how I referred to the BCC. Thank you very much. Here is no further business.
Paul didn't talk.
Paul! I'm so sorry.
Oh, I know, that's fine. It's, I knew it was an accident, so.
You know, you spoke so eloquently tonight, I thought you were done.
Yeah, well, I can be.
No, go ahead.
Well, thank you, Chair, for your comments. And I think it was interpreted by, you know, other people that, and I use the word "my colleagues." That's the word, that's a term I use when I talk about ourselves. And so I appreciate your being mindful and listening to us. What I, and Chair, your other point about all the different things we do, we are doing, we're doing a lot, people don't really realize it. We have our opportunity on Tuesday a little bit to talk about what's going on in here at the BCC at this moment, to talk about what we're all working on. And I've got a, ever since HB 2017 passed, five years ago, my life's changed. I've been extremely busy. Tomorrow, I'll be having discussions and meetings. One of them was with one of the members of the TRIMET Board tomorrow and talking about transit. And someone, there was a comment today about the parking discussion we had the other day and, you know, a lot of the structure and the planning, urban planning has been done, some of it being metro smart growth, has been premised or prefaced on, and premised on a transit system that will serve the metro region. And Clackamas County, not all of it, is served by the metro region, half our populations or more, a little bit over half our population within the metro boundaries. And therefore, but we have a lot of areas in that metro boundary where we don't have transit, but they want us to build the housing, the apartments, transportation-oriented. They want to accommodate transit and design that. And the latest thing that the legislature has gotten into in the last few years has been actually making land use decisions, which they hadn't done before, which they are currently doing, based on that same philosophy or ideology or both. And that is that, you know, for example, restricting parking or reducing parking requirements. And that can make sense in some settings. However, what I have learned in my 10 years, I've been here for 12, but in my 10 years serving as the transportation representative at JPAC and others, is that, okay, if transit's gonna happen, if it's part of our system, then when's it gonna happen? Where's the dollars? Where's it gonna be, the expansion? And as I, you've heard me say before, and I'm speaking to the people here in the room and the people that are watching at home, my colleagues have heard this before, you know, there's not a path to get there. There's not the financial means in which to bring the transit, any rate that's gonna meet those needs. So therefore, if we build a unit and we don't have parking, people are gonna park on the side streets, they're not gonna have a place to park. And that's created, that's already creating havoc today in Portland, but even without those reduced parking, we already have parking conflicts today and they've been going on for a long time. On Monday morning, there was a Regional Tolling Advisory Committee and it was covered on KGW News, and this discussion came up about transit. And the catch-all for all of the problems that we have, whether it's climate, well, if more people took transit, that would reduce, you know, greenhouse gas emissions. If more people took transit, we would reduce congestion. If more people took transit, it would reduce diversion on our local roads where there is congestion. If we want to reduce the cost of housing, we build these multi-story things and people don't need to buy a car, own a car, solution, transit. But the reality is, the money, the resources in the system can't expand much more than it currently is in the paradigm that we're in. So we have to just say, okay, it's been 30 years or 40 years since we have put this reliance, this big safety net of transit being the catch-all, do-all, in a system that's certainly not moving. We're not moving the needle, frankly. So do we keep on continuing on this path or do we make a course correction? And I think we really kind of consider a course correction and have a reality check. And that's, that'll be part of my discussion with one of the TRIMET Board members tomorrow, who I've met with before, and staff have a great relationship with and saying, can you help us? Do you see it growing? And the answer has been, year after year, Commissioner, we don't have the resources, the money, to really add much coverage. So I will, I don't think I'll hear something different tomorrow other than, can you help support us? And what do we do in the interim? Or what do we do to make a course correction so that we're not losing progress and we're not creating havoc for people? The other point I made, I think that really rang home, and I'll close with this, is that, you know, the industry, the automotive industry is converting to electric cars and alternative fuel cars and so forth. And if you buy an electric car, you're presumably gonna want to plug it in and charge it overnight. And if you don't have a parking place in your apartment and there's no parking, I just can't imagine, I think I made the comment jokingly, that we can't have 2,000 or 1,000-foot extension cords going through our neighborhoods to charge these cars if there's not a parking spot nearby. It'd seem more logical that our legislators would say, you know what, maybe you should mandate some level of charging stations, you know, in the parking places, but not to, not require them at all. So lots said, I'll stop there. Wish everyone a great holiday season and a nice evening and a good weekend. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Savis. Just yell at me next time when I don't hear from you.
Well, we were kind of way, but you got on such a good roll, I didn't want to stop it, so I was gonna.
Yeah, yeah, no, we didn't want to interrupt.
Yeah, yeah, you were doing great.
That's why we did the little, with the little no.
You know, you all should turn on the buttons on the lights all at once.
Oh, would that work?
Yeah, okay, it's too late now. Okay. See, no further business before this board, we are adjourned.